And good morning, everybody. It is March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners work session. And by way of introduction, I'm John Hutchins, the Chair of the Board, and to my right is
I'm Mencer.
and my left.
Yuri Adams.
And Romero Chavez.
Joshua Cummings.
And we over here. AB, thank you for being here. On the agenda, first thing is an action that we will consider, and that's the county office closure.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is a follow-up to the direction you proved, the majority of our provided yesterday in closing county facilities for access to the public. As your legislative, as a legislative body, you need to formalize that through a formal action. So I have prepared for you a resolution.
Thank you.
Well, and my question is, why do we need a particular resolution? Is this under our emergency declaration or something?
And I could probably walk you through it because under your resolution, you as a legislative authority pass a a resolution back in two thousand and eleven where you established what the hours of operations of the county facility.
Okay, I guess I got to refer it. I wasn't here in two thousand and eleven, so you mean a previous board?
Yeah, well, I said the board, so not necessarily you. So let me walk you through this, if I may. If you'd like me to read this, just.
Please.
So we're as per soon RCW thirty-six, one, six, one hundred. All county offices shall be kept open to the transactions of business during such days and hours as the Board of County Commissioners prescribe. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Thurston County adopted a resolution one, four, one, five, one, five on May third, two thousand and eleven, sit in the business hours of county offices and departments on Monday through Friday from eight to five, except for holidays, twenty-four hour operations in district and superior courts. And whereas on February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, the governor proclaimed a state of emergency in the state of Washington. Whereas on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the World Health Organization declared COVID nineteen global pandemic. On March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, the board proclaimed a state of emergency within Thurston County due to COVID nineteen. Whereas the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, CDC tightened its guidance on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. The gatherings of more than fifty people be canceled for the next eight weeks. And whereas as of the date of this ordinance, there has been six reported confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Thurston County. One thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven confirmed cases in the state of Washington and sixty-six deaths reported in Washington estate from COVID nineteen. And whereas there's evidence of increasing transmission of COVID nineteen within Thurston County, scientific evidence and national public health guidance support strategies to slow the transmission of COVID nineteen and protect vulnerable members of the public from avoidable risks of serious illness or death resulting from the exposure of COVID nineteen. And whereas the age, condition and health of a significant portion of the population of Thurston County places at risk for serious health conditions, including death from COVID nineteen, although most individuals who contract COVID nineteen do not become seriously ill. Persons with mild symptoms and symptomatic persons with COVID nineteen may place other vulnerable members of the public at significant risk. Whereas a large surge in the number of persons in serious infections can be compromise the ability of the regional healthcare system to deliver necessary healthcare to public. Whereas in light of COVID nineteen pandemic and in the interest of protecting the public health and safety of its residents and employees, the board strongly believe it is necessary to close public access to public facilities beginning Thursday, March ninth through Friday, April third, two thousand and twenty. And whereas courts and other offices may have modified restrictions. And whereas during the restrictions, the county will continue to provide the highest level of service to our citizens utilizing modified strategies such as online services, drop boxes, email, phone and video conferences. And whereas public access will still be provided to citizens who wish to attend board meetings. Whereas this ordinance will reduce the likelihood that many individuals will be exposed to COVID nineteen and will thereby slow the spread of COVID nineteen in our community. And whereas this ordinance comes after the release of substantial guidance from Thurston County Public Health and Social Services and the Centers of Disease Control. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Thurston County. Section one, resolution one, four, five, one, five is hereby rescinded until April third, two thousand and twenty. Section two, public access is closed to all county facilities from Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty through April third, two thousand and twenty, except for those offices and meeting list and meetings listed on section three and four. Section three, the sheriff, prosecutor attorney, district, superior courts and the clerk offices may operate under a modified hours of operations open to the public. Section four, meetings of the Board of County Commissioners will be open to the public, and I can give you how we're going to be managing that.
Okay, thank you.
All offices and departments will continue to provide services to the public online and through other means as determined by the respective offices and departments and as posted on the respective websites. Section six, at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioner or County Manager Office hours for individual offices and all departments may be altered to accommodate the scheduling workloads in public and public convenience. This resolution shall take effect at AM, March eighteen, two thousand and twenty. So how, this is just the resolution we worked at yesterday for your consideration based on the direction you provided. One of the key elements is we couldn't stop the public to come and attend if they wish the meetings that you have as of today. So that way we're going to be managing that and we're going to be sending online and it's already posted. And we also pushing on social media that this door will be open ten minutes before you as a board convene and will close ten minutes after the board ends your meetings. We'll practice that for the next two weeks. And again, if there's any additional information the citizens will need, so we'll continue to practice that. Any questions?
Yes, and they'll be in here, they won't be downstairs.
They will be here. And we have a space of chairs if there is for any reason, we run out of chairs in here, we can always go to one fifty-two as an overflow.
So we're going to limit the number that are in here to the number of chairs.
Yeah, because following, well, following the public health guidelines, we have placed those chairs six feet apart. So it's very limited number of chairs in this room.
Right, and that won't be an issue, but we'll see.
Why doesn't our emergency declaration cover whatever we're doing from that point on? My question is, especially like if you refer to six, I mean, it gives you leeway to do about what you need to do anyway. So why are we trying to cover every little thing through a resolution? Because surely we'll miss something.
And I totally agree with you, Commissioner. I'm president at times, we're going to be missing something.
So why do we need this?
I think this is needed because it doesn't give us the authority if we don't address resolution number one, four, five, one, five that was placed on that.
I think our resolution of an emergency does cover it all.
It doesn't, it gives the county manager the authority to deviate from human resources policies. This resolution grants that authority to you and also myself if we can continue with this modified schedule.
I think any policy should have some type of flexibility in it. If something unknowns to us pops up overnight or early in the morning, whatever, we don't have to convene to decide, you can decide right then.
And this resolution does that to a great extent.
Well, I disagree with that. I don't think we need it. I think we've covered it in an emergency declaration. And if we're going to try to pick everything that we cover or don't cover, we're going to be here every day discussing, well, what about this? What about that? What about employees that are in a vehicle and they're closer than six feet? So how do we address that? I just think we're getting a little carried away. We've made the declaration and you've passed at least a stipulation that the courthouse be closed under that declaration.
No, we didn't pass that.
I thought we voted on that.
No, the emergency declaration did not include closing county.
Well, that's just one of the things we're going to do. We might have to have somebody ride in the back of a pickup because they can't ride up front.
I think I might be missing your point though, because what you're saying, we would be back here if the pickup truck or an employee or whatever will be back here all the time trying to discuss this stuff, and that recludes that from happening. That gives us the weasel room.
I think the weasel, I think the weasel room is already in the first emergency declaration. Sorry.
I don't have that declaration in front of me. I don't remember if it had any catch-all language, but I guess the work is done, like somebody drafted this and put it together. I see we passed this and then if there's a proposed another declaration, you know, resolution, we can discuss whether or not it's needed.
I mean, are we working outside the law then as soon as somebody brings it to our attention? Just then by Elizabeth?
Yes, it's signed by Elizabeth. Her and I worked on this. And they, and what I'm proposing to you is just to make sure that we cover all the aspects of the operations of the county to avoid any potential challenges down the road. And that is my obligation to you, and that obligation will not change. Whether the board feels that it's not a need to sign, that's within your purview. But my obligation to you is to present all the tools, what I believe is protecting the integrity of the commission and yourselves.
Elizabeth's signature on here, and so I'm okay with that. And I don't want to burn too much more time. We've already burned almost a quarter of an hour, and we have a big one to talk about.
Okay.
With the CPED in here.
There is a misspelling in here.
You found it and I didn't.
Sheriff's got one R.
Oh, where's that, where's that?
Very good, counselor.
Oh, it is, look at that.
So I have the original, thank you. And that is when we develop legislation in a very short period of time. Thank you.
Way I get better than that.
That was good.
More the health one last week.
Well, you see, this one is twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
The last one was two hours.
So before we get into economic.
This is the original.
Do we need to go into?
So you need to take an action, so there is a proposed action in here for the vice chair to read.
Yeah.
All right, so I would make a motion to approve a resolution to close public access to county facilities. And that is this new resolution number or it'll be assigned later?
No, that's the resolution, but we don't need to.
We don't need to refer to it by number. Okay, we don't.
Is it a second?
Yeah, wait a second.
We don't have to refer to it by number though.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Not gonna mention it anyway. As soon as I get it.
Oh, well, I was going to sign it, but I'm not going to sign it till we vote.
Okay, so it's a move in second to approve for resolution one, five, eight, eight, two, to close public access to county facilities. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No.
Nope, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now permitting process discussion. And do you want to start it? Do you want to start it?
Based on the conversation the board had yesterday, I believe Commissioner Edwards would like to have some time to explore the ideas that he had yesterday. And since it is related to a permitting process, Josh is here, and hopefully we can.
And this has to do with the greater activity, greater good, you know, surrounding the economic engine that we want to keep running here locally. And I think that ties in with what we're going to try to do with the state and nationally is to get out from underneath this situation when we finally get it under control. And I don't see, there are many, many jurisdictions in this country that do not require permits for everything that you and here is the exception, we require permits. This isn't a problem with the staff. This is a problem that the administration has put on the staff through policies that they've developed. And in some cases, following state law, probably in most cases, following state law. So I'm proposing that until this situation is under control, that we grant an amnesty. And there might be the argument, well, what gives you the authority to do that? Well, I'm going to say it's our declaration of an emergency and the governor's declaration of emergency and the president's declaration of an emergency. So that would be my first choice, I guess. My second choice, because we always need a plan B if one thing doesn't go through, would be currently, a citizen comes in and pays X amount of dollars for a permit to move forward on their project. And it's more of an application fee. It could be a septic permit, for an example. And I'm going to use a specific example. I talked to the person yesterday about this. In the fall of two thousand and seventeen, he came in and got a septic permit. It was about two thousand dollars or whatever they are, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for that permit. Then he moved forward with the process to get the other permits needed. And those permits were increments of money charged to him based on, well, we also need this and we need this. And so now he's up over ten thousand dollars in permits. And he hasn't started his project yet, and it is thirty months later. So what I'm proposing is that a citizen come in and put one percent down of the estimated cost that this is going to cost him. And the reason I use one percent is any one of us, I believe, when we filed for office to kind of show that we were sincere, we had to post a one percent filing charge. I would propose that that citizen be able to post one percent at that time and not pay another dime until he's got a permit in hand. This gentleman has got ten thousand dollars out, thirty months in wasted time. That doesn't even consider his time back and forth, back and forth. So I just think you go to Pellegrino's and have dinner, you pay for it when you get done with your dinner.
Not now.
Well, not right now, no. Okay, not under this situation. But I just see that our government is backwards. We're extorting money from citizens and then they don't get anything for it. And it's pretty common. I know this is not a common situation, but I can point to many situations that go on for a year and a half with the same type of expenditure by the citizen and no benefit for about a year and a half. And it comes back that our CPED director uses once in a while, well, you need a green rock to do this. And well, you need red rocks for this, and you're told that after you run around trying to find all the green rocks. So I'm just wanting to be an advocate for the citizens and to help citizens expedite the process of moving forward. Whether we give them an amnesty or turn the situation around so citizens don't have to pay out of pocket. And that's a lot of money to some folks. And this job happens to be a remodel that I think I'm talking about. And I mentioned a couple of remodel situations over the last couple of days that people came in and were not able to get those permits for whatever reason. And one of them was a damage from a windstorm. The other one, I think the guy just wants to expand six feet on the side of his house.
I just want to ask a question, a clarifying question. When may have somebody come in and they pay a fee for whatever service they're looking for? Is that based on employee staff time and the effort that, like a pay for play?
So there's an application fee that they pay at the time of supplemental. And then depending upon the project, there's review fees because projects, there's unforeseen items that happen within every project. So yes, there is follow-up.
Oh, introduce yourself, Josh. I didn't introduce you, I'm sorry, Matt.
Joshua Cummings, the director of CPED, dirty playing. So yes, that answer to your question is yes, there is an application fee. And then there is a permit review fee, and that's the process.
And that pays for staff time as well, and that's.
Correct, and that's a board decision. The board, the Board of County Commissioners makes the decision to charge the fees. And the board is a legislative body, maybe not these humans that are sitting here now, but the board is a legislative body, made a decision that the permit fees are one hundred percent cost recovery.
Cost recovery, okay.
And so that is what we do, we recover the costs of the review. And to the statement about the different colored rocks, as you're going through a project, the different topics evolve and change. And what we've worked to do in CPED over the past few years is to streamline that process to ensure that the rocks, topics that are needed as much as we can to the extent are known at the very beginning, which has reduced time. And you've received multiple briefings from Brett Burris, our Development Services Manager, on the project review timeline that we're also creating and already implementing with specific projects like Johnson Smokehouse to make sure that all of those items are upfront right off the bat and that we're consistent and accountable. So I'm interested to learn more about what board direction actually might be because at this moment, at this moment in time, our services are continuing. We haven't stopped, our people are working great.
But are we extorting money from people?
I didn't say that, I'm.
I was asking, are we extorting people or not, money?
It's the board's decision to be one hundred percent cost recovery.
Okay. What are we?
Sure. So two kind of alternate A and B proposals there. Let me start with B, I guess, because that one didn't come up yesterday, the idea of having a deposit kind of thing. So that's a pretty interesting idea that I don't, on the surface, have any problem with. It's, but it, to me, it's not, like, that's something that you might want to permanently change. It's not.
Oh, yes, I know, I don't see that it's having anything to do with emergency or.
And so that's something that maybe we want to talk about and think about maybe making a permanent change in the way we, I know there would obviously be a budget impact, like as you transition from that, maybe a little, not budget, but staff, you know, CPED, you know, resources. But that's something that maybe we could, we could bridge over. So I, I'm amenable to that idea, but I think it's, I don't think it's something we slam down as an emergency thing. It's something we think about as a permanent way of doing business. So that's, that's interesting. A, the amnesty idea, I was kind of taken aback. I mean, I don't, that is a big deal, and I had a couple, a few reactions to that. One was, I would hope that the board would not do anything like that without a thorough legal review. I mean, when this thing dropped, you know, I wanted to see a moratorium on evictions, but I didn't make a motion for a moratorium on evictions. I said, can we have a legal review of what our options are, what we're allowed to do? And then before we got that legal review, the sheriff came in and said, I'm not processing anything. So it became a moot point. But I would want, I would want input from Travis or whoever, are we putting ourselves at risk? What authority do we have before I would consider coming in that? Second, I think it's unnecessary given, and Josh hasn't been as thorough today as he was earlier, about the process, like who's essential? Can they get their work done? You know, what's the dropout system look like? Are people going to be hung up in their permitting, you know, aspirations by this shutdown of the public counter? And you've convinced me that that's not true. So I don't think that this is necessary move. And then I have to just point out, Commissioner, that a couple of months ago, planning session, you know, you you made a motion to eliminate building permits, period. But it had nothing to do with COVID. So I don't, again, I don't see that this is an emergency COVID related. This is a policy thing that, you know, you're very consistent about. And I appreciate that and understand that, but I don't want to wrap this into, you know, it would be a big, big decision. And it's not something that I want to do on emergency response basis. Those are my reactions.
May I just follow up quickly? You're brilliant, you've got some great ideas, and I like and support your ideas. Regardless, because if we're working in partnership with the EDC and the Thurston Chamber and all their partners as well. And we're trying to stave off any further damage done to our businesses, people and their economic engine. You have great ideas, but when I hear sort of rhetoric comes up, just in terms of just, it's like a splash of cold water.
Oh, I realize, yeah.
And that's what, yes, that's what, yes, that's what I lose message. But you have some creative ideas, and I do appreciate that as well. And we come to a consensus on a policy change or philosophical change. I'm all amenable, amenable to that too. It makes perfect sense to do that, what we can do. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. I like to get attention once in a while.
It's interactive.
But the reality is, I'm asking for actually two separate things. The amnesty issue is only for while we're in this situation that we're in today. The, changing the payment of the permit process, I agree with Commissioner Mensah that that I'm, that I'm just moving forward, conducting the county's business. And because I have been so frustrated with the delays, and I want to thank our economic, our CPED Director Josh for streamlining this process. This, we are. This, we are so much better off today than we were five years ago, for an example. If you talk to any contractor out there, you will hear that regularly. But we've still got a long ways to go. And I can take any citizen out and show them some real sad situations that have taken place. I took the county manager out one time to a sad situation to show, well, how does this stuff happen? Why is this stuff happening? We're never gonna get it all figured out, but the amnesty is temporary. And the permit process and the paying for that fee, I, I see that as just a normal course of business that I thought, cause I knew who I would run into resistance on the amnesty. And I thought, well, why not come up with something that helps the citizen? Maybe I'm not gonna win the amnesty argument. Yes, I wanna change all these things and make it easier for citizens. Uh, if my seatmates don't agree with me, then I think it's my obligation to continue to try and come up with beneficial, uh, policies for the citizens out there that would help them out.
No, yes, the amnesty, I just need more information about.
Okay, uh, and so changing the permitting process around, also that will, I, I believe it's just human nature. If someone thought, oh, God, we don't, I'm gonna have a budget coming in, we don't get this done. It's gonna get this process hurried along. Every delay that takes place is not the fault of CPED. There are a lot of other things that come into play. But in total, the citizen becomes the victim, not the government. The government, the government employees get paid every two weeks. Whether there's a, a project completed or not, the citizen has people out there waiting to work to get paid. So time is money in the real world. And that's what I'm trying to address here. And, and I wouldn't wanna spend an awful lot of time on it. Again, I'm gonna push that we create these, uh, changes, if you will, as soon as we possibly can, because it'll help the overall continuation of keeping our economic engine going. That's, that's why, uh, uh, let me just give you a breakdown. Uh, just as an example, I mentioned fifteen hundred dollars for a septic plan. Then there was a site plan variance that they needed and that was over two thousand dollars. Uh, and that was, uh, within, uh, well, I guess that was all about the same time. That was within a couple of days, so that was thirty-five hundred dollars permits there. Uh, then something else septic in, uh, about four months later, uh, about four hundred dollars. And then, uh, the permit was actually issued for another seven thousand dollars. And that was, uh, this last year, about this time last year. And why they're not up to that yet is beyond me. Also, this party had to have a, a tree inspection and that cost, uh, another five hundred dollars. And he was never advised that our own critical areas ordinance that addresses trees gives an exemption for a danger tree that can fall on the house. And a danger tree is called a tree, uh, with the same length as it would hit the house. So we don't need an arborist to tell you that this hundred foot tree standing fifty feet from the house is a danger tree. Uh, I've got personal experience on that. The county prohibited me from taking down a big fir tree. Uh, it was in about two thousand and four, we had a big storm. And that big tree came down and went right through my house and actually totaled it out. And that's, uh, there, I've got a newspaper article on anybody that would be interested to see it, how policy.
The sheriff got hit by a tree.
Yeah, well, it went right through the house and it went right through the utility room, tore all the plumbing loose, or tore the wiring loose. It was loose. It was raining at that time. The wind got under the roof, flipped the roof off, and then it rained for about ten hours straight. And the house was totaled by the insurance company.
But the kinds of permits required is a different issue than the, the capacity of Josh's department to process those permits. Which is, I thought, what we were talking about in terms of the emergency process.
Well, sure.
You're, you're, you're taking it to a higher level and saying, I don't think there should be so many types of permits.
Well, I'm just saying, no, I, no, no, I'm not saying that. Sure, I wish there weren't so many permits, but in this case, I'm saying, why not charge the citizen? In this case, this citizen is, uh, uh, ten, ten thousand, almost eleven thousand dollars over the course of this thirty months. And he still hasn't started his project yet.
Well, you were talking about your, 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 your second proposal example.
Yeah, on the second example, that's right. So that's why we're required to pay one percent to file for office. What's wrong with something, okay, we wanna make sure the citizen is sincere. So maybe we don't give it away for free. Let's get something upfront. But then the final payoff is not paid off until the final permit is issued. He hasn't got his septic tank put in yet. And that was, uh, just for the review, I mean, he's still got the cost to put the tank in and the pump up drain field pressure tank, all that, which is all good, protects the environment. But he hasn't done it yet. They've been sitting on his money for that whole length of period because other things were delayed a lot.
Right, let me just jump in, cause when you said protect the environment, uh, you know, I don't think you're gonna get me to an amnesty because a lot of our codes are related to health, safety, use environmental protection. So if, if, if we're letting people just go out and, as you say, it's important that we make sure that the septic inspection is done because that protects the environment. If we don't have those things happening, we're, we're causing, we're trying to help on one hand and we're causing damage on the other hand. So I'm, I'm just.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but, okay. I, I, I sympathize with your position. I respect your position. I don't wanna hurt the environment. I wanna make sure we protect the environment, but I wanna keep commerce moving. And this is a way to keep commerce moving, just during the, just during this, we might be in this situation for three months or so, we don't know. Sounds like, uh, there was some information that came out that there's some pretty good treatment, uh, potentials coming out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Anyway, go ahead. I don't wanna hold.
Just wasting my time. So I, I believe that in, in trying times, that's when we explore thinking outside of the box and you have been consistent on that, Commissioner, so I appreciate that from my point of view. The, the, the one percent down certainly is an interesting, uh, approach. Um, but I probably recommend the board to have staff, uh, bring you back the briefing that you participated maybe three years ago, um, uh, in the previous board, where, uh, staff walk you through all the different fees that we pay, the permitting fees. As Josh stated, is a, is a, is a full recovery fee process. And, uh, and, you know, we compared with other counties at that time, because other counties, uh, you know, charge less. The difference at that time, other counties subsidizes some of the permit fees with the general fund. Maybe we can, uh, uh, schedule a briefing related.
Well, go ahead.
Uh, relate to that, so we can start exploring the options. And, uh, the one percent, as I understand, is, um, your proposal is, is a bridge. You know, one percent, we go through the process and at the end, you know, the full payment is, is given. Um, and I think that depending on the length of that bridge, I think we need to be developing a, a financial structure as to what fund will hold, will bridge over that type period of time. And the only funding strategy, at least that I know, is the general fund. Because we cannot wait or we cannot, we have to pay staff to process those permits. If absent a bridge loan, uh, this is my words, not yours, uh, a bridge loan in which the, the general fund can back that bridge loan over a certain period of time, I don't see any other way that we can do that. But we can ex, absolutely, we can explore that with you. We can absolutely explore that. Um, so that would be probably my suggestion. A good step is just to, maybe a, a good opportunity for Commissioner Mensah also to see the different fee structures and how that compares to other counties. Remember that briefing, do you?
I do.
Maybe if, if you like, uh, we can probably bring that as a, as a, as a first starting point of the conversation.
Okay, except we are in an emergent situation. That's why nobody's here. That's why people are in fear of their situation today. I don't wanna wait. I don't see why we can't put something in place, put it in place for three or four months. We're, we shut the courthouse down for a couple of weeks without knowing exactly what's coming, which I was opposed to. I wanna do it weekly, but that's okay. It's a democratic process. Why can't we just go ahead and talk about it right now? Okay, don't wanna go to the amnesty? I wanna go to the amnesty. You know, we'll see what Commissioner Hudson says about that. But once that, uh, once we make that decision, depending on how the vote comes out, what's wrong with a temporary solution? And as far as backfilling, I want a big emphasis put on hurry up and get this done. I don't want a three year delay. I don't want a two year delay. I want people to get on with their projects and do it quickly. So that would cover the amnesty end of things for now, for a select period of time. And then I want this to be permanent where we change the fee structure. So if you're thinking that they can't get the job done, I just, I, uh, differ with your opinion on that.
Oh, I, I didn't state that.
Uh, I think they can get the job done and get the cash flowing and the incentive will be there to get the job done. So we don't have this thirty month delay. We happen to have a bit of a windfall that we, uh, in sales tax that came in extra and referred to in some of our discussions as the bubble. I think we could backfill if we need to backfill. And then make sure that continuation of funding to pay, uh, for the process is coming in. But it's gonna come in after the fact, not on the backs of these citizens that are probably working with limited resources. Uh, this gentleman's out ten thousand dollars and he's been out for thirty months in total on that. Now incrementally, not for that whole period of time. But why should we steal money from the citizens? I know you don't like that term. I don't, neither one of you like that term, but I feel we are stealing money from citizens to provide them a service. And then we tell them, well, you gotta get this pink rock to make this work. And those are just things that come up. Well, if there are things that come up, we should be penalized a little bit, not the citizen. I'd like to see a timeframe put on all this so that within ten days or something, they get the permit to get started and get moving. Now, I don't know where that's all gonna go. Probably isn't all gonna go, but.
It's happening now. That's the project.
I'll ask you if you wanna weigh in now.
Okay. Uh, I know Commissioner Mensah has.
County manager has.
Do you have anything to answer, Franklin?
Yeah, and, um, and, um, you stated, um, you know, we, I think we have been, uh, very fortunate. In two thousand nineteen, the indefinite balance of the general fund has come higher than we were expecting. And, and I think that from my point of, that's, that's the little piece of good news that we'll have in this emergency.
Today.
Today. Um, but also I believe that, um, we don't know the impacts of this crisis gonna have on the county. And I strongly recommend the board to be mindful as to not to go ahead and start spending that little extra cushion that we have without knowing the consequences of this crisis that will have on the overall financials.
I wanna say our sales tax revenue is gonna.
It, it very well could. And I feel this is only gonna take about six months at the most that we would have to, uh, fund a backlog, if you will. Why can't it be three months? Let's get going and get some things done and push to get things done. So, and it's a one-time expenditure. Once we get that bow wave in front of us going, then it will be self-sufficient from that point on. But it, to remain self-sufficient, we have to be timely in getting our permits to those individuals that want it and then they will pay for it at that time.
Go ahead.
Uh, I guess two things. One is I, I can't, I'm kind of repeating myself, but I'm, I'm very, you know, I'm very interested in this proposal. I'm just not, I don't really see it as the emergent, it, it, I get, I understand the argument you're making about how this will, this will help, but I really don't see it as the emergency measure that needs to be pushed in that way. But that aside, what I would need to see before I could support it, and it could be a shotgun guesstimate, but I just need to see the quantity of money we're talking about. How many, how, how much permitting money comes in the door in a six, ninety day or six month period? And then, you know, if we were only taking one percent or ten percent of that, how much money are we talking about backfilling as a bridge to the point where Commissioner was talking about? The money starts to, to flow in because permits are getting done. The average number of time, and I know Brett's timeline now, we're hoping the average number of time is, what, a hundred and forty days or something like that?
That's our time.
Our time, not county, yeah. So factoring in the constituent time, what's an average timeline? You know, is it more like a year? Let's say it's a year. Let's just say it's a year for argument's sake. How much permit money is flowing in the door in a year that, that we would therefore have to bridge before permits get done? And you understand my question? And I'm not asking you for the answer now, but I'm just saying, I would need a ballpark number before I could consider taking this on an emergency basis, what you're saying. Uh, that could probably be generated quickly.
Okay, I just, uh, just one quick follow up. I hope we don't have to talk about a year delay as the average. I, I mean, that just drives me right up the wall. I'm gonna be out telling citizens, if I was in your shoes, I'd go ahead and build a good hell of a permit. That's how strongly I feel about it. And I hear this from citizens. Every day I get complaints about this. Now, again, I'm gonna compliment CPED for doing, you know, really streamlining. I mean, these citizens that are calling me today still tell me, well, it's better than it was, but we got a long way to go. And that's, that's what I'm hearing, so.
But that, that those complaints have nothing to do with coronavirus.
No, no, they don't, except I wanna give every benefit to the business that's trying to employ ten people and maybe they've got two houses going. That's, that's all I'm saying is when, when we delay an individual from being able to pour a footing or put up a stem wall or whatever it is, he's gotta tell his employer, well, sorry, this week they won't like to work, so now they're off work. I don't know if they're gonna get unemployment compensation, maybe with this new Corona thing, maybe they will. Uh, but maybe not. But I wanna expedite the process so we can encourage the economic engine to keep percolating even in these times of duress.
When you, before you were the, uh, director of CPED, you were the economic development manager. I mean, you were that focal point. And I remember meeting with you three years ago, saying we, I would love to incentivize, uh, building in the county, building that meant with residential commercials, all the business, it's all revenue. And it moves people forward, uh, incentivizing. Uh, and, but now that we're in this, uh, trough and a time of turmoil and unknown, how long it's gonna continue, it's plainly, it's plain to see that the economics, uh, naturally and globally is plummeting. So even though I've been asking for that personally, not asking, but, but intrigued by incentivizing building this county for some time, I'm even more now exacerbated by the, by the emergency that we're in right now, nationally, worldwide. But locally, to do whatever we can to minimize damage done to folks who are in the business or want to get into business. Uh, and so I, I'm very intrigued, even more so now that we're in this state of, of crisis, uh, to do something to help minimize the loss to folks. That's where I am right now. So I need more information on all these things so I can make a, a, a good, um, responsible, accurate judgment and decision. So which one are you first?
But how about, are we done with our discussion?
No, uh-uh. No, we're still talking about this topic. Who's, why do you wanna know which one, but they will have an answer.
Uh, I'd like to follow up in, 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 I think we, um, I don't wanna diminish, you know, the perspective of an applicant of a citizen because we have received a lot of comments as to how long it takes to process a permit. That, that has been part of our reality for many years. But perhaps at least, and this from my point of view, what is missing in translation is, is the time in which the applicant has to return documentation to process a permit, which is encompassing all that timeline. And, and, uh, Josh is working just to make sure that that is not missing when he's tracking that permit. Because it's, it, what I believe is a partnership. Whether the partnership is a little bit here or here, uh, I, I think something we can always. Whether the partnership is a little bit here or here, uh, I, I think something we can always work to enhance the partnership. But also, it, when there's a partnership, there is also the applicant and the citizens have a responsibility to be timely on, on, on submitting the permits. And also we have to be responsible, to be clear from the beginning, that we give a bag of all those rocks. All the different rocks, we need to have the responsibility to provide that to the citizen right at the beginning as to what they need to expect. And Josh is working on that. Has, he has presented to you as to how he wants to manage that, because I believe that is an element of frustration, I believe, from the citizens and the developers. Is, you, you talk about green rock, yellow rock, and I.
It's a good analogy.
You know, and, but, but I think that is the, the bag of rocks. Hopefully, we can provide that at the beginning so everybody understands what they need to do. But it's a partnership, and I believe we can enhance that partnership as well.
The one thing I forgot to mention, and I'll get you in a second, in my, uh, diatribe was about timeliness. I would love to use this, uh, emergency powers wherever we could to do something, uh, rapidly rather than, well, it's going to have to go to a doctor, it has to go to a call to MAMX, it can take a year. Philosophically and policy-wise, let's break down the road. But I'm interested in some, doing something as quickly as we can. So go ahead, Josh, you got the floor.
Okay, so there's a couple of things. Yes, I was the Economic Development Manager previous. I was also the Sustainability Manager of this position. Uh, and it's also important to recognize, I think, maybe for a baseline, uh, none of the decisions that we're making currently in ensuring continuing service to citizens are done in a vacuum. I reached out to the business community. Olympia Master Brothers has been involved in these discussions, the Economic Development Council, as well as our current Economic Development Manager, Gina Kavashado. And so maybe it might be helpful, because we've got kind of two, maybe three conversations happening here. There's the big overarching conversation about time is money, which we're addressing. The fees are what the fees are as set by the board at a hundred percent cost recovery. But where we can make a difference is shortening that time, and we're doing that with the project review timeline. It's already in process. In terms of emergency response to essentially creating a catalyst to keep the economic engine going, keeping the building environment going, I've reached out to Cheryl Fables of Pac Mountain to relay to her that we're continuing the pipeline of work so the building industry can continue to employ. Uh, and so let's take just a breath for a second in terms of what the permitting process looks like. Because with CPED, we are the entry point in the Building Development Center. But then it also has public health with septic items that you were mentioning earlier. And it has roads and byways with public works, and then it has plans and plant use with CPED. But the entry point is the Building Development Center. And that really, truly, in connection with the coronavirus, is where we need to ensure that the pipeline can continue to flow, that applicants come in through the BDC. The pipeline then goes from the application to the BDC to then routing those BDC employees route those applications to those three different departments. It goes into plans review, and then once it's through plans review and the process begins, it goes through building inspection. Building inspection, after it's all good and green light, goes to final applicant, final permit. So you're done. That pipeline is currently filled. So right now, we are not stopping services. What we need to make sure we don't stop and constrict is the entry point, the Building Development Center. Now let me just read to you, uh, within the emergency management plan that we provided to the county commission, excuse me, to the county commissioners, uh, but directly to the county manager. I'll just go through this really quickly so you guys have a baseline of what's current status and what will also continue when we go, if we go to the essential personnel discussion. And this is just CPED. Development Services Building Unit, Essential Personnel. Building Inspectors can maintain service, email, case routing to vehicles, and will engage social distancing. Building Plans Examiners will review plans remotely. Planning Unit, planners can continue to review plans remotely. And then there's the Building Development Center. This unit has the most direct in-building interaction with citizens. The citizens can use the website, email, phone. Applications will continue to be received. Large applications and other applications will utilize a Dropbox. I brought the Dropbox with me that we purchased yesterday.
Then you're strong to pick that up.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Just let me figure it. This was purchased from Always Safe and Security downtown Olympia across from.
Just put it down because it's blocking the camera.
I'll do this for the camera, okay? This is the Dropbox. That is kind of complacent. So we're keeping the BDC moving. We're accepting applications while adhering to the guidance that's been provided. We also purchased this from a local business, so you've got economic development right there. Uh, and we're continuing that pipeline. And so the what and the why is really what I'm interested in. Is the what, reducing the timeline for permits? We're doing it. Is the why, because we're in an emergency and we're not able to process permits? Unclear, because we're doing it. I've engaged with Olympia Master Builders, like I've said. If they have input on how we could assist with the building, uh, industry in a better way, they are providing us that input. They're reaching out right now to their different communities to come up with ideas that they think are legally defensible, that will be effective, and that we can implement in a timely manner. So just as a baseline, I want to make sure there's been a lot of discussion about good and creative ideas. We're not risking our morals. We'll accept that information. We're also reaching out to the business community already. We're four days in, potentially four weeks or longer, and our people are doing it. They've never done this before. The way that we work is going to change, but we're continuing to work. We are serving citizens. And from my perspective, everything that we can do to support the humans that are on the front lines taking these applications and continuing this process is going to only benefit our community. If those people get sick at the very front of that pipeline and they can't process any of those applications coming in, there will be no permits for this entire Thurston County community. That is integral. And so we respect our humans that are working here, the process that we've already put in place, then we will be able to respect them. I appreciate the creativeness and the attention to helping our community, but know that you've put me in place to do it, and we are, and the people that are within our group are so engaged. They also eat at Pellegrino's and have soccer games with each other. We're not strangers. We're neighbors. And as neighbors, we need to commit to being that. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that we're in this together. And if we can think clearly about the big stuff that we're already doing and the stuff that we're doing to address the emergency, then we can go forward. I'm open to receiving any input, but I also don't want to distract from the fact that we're already doing it.
Well, your drive and your passion makes me want to stand and salute you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Your passion in taking care of your employees.
Indeed.
And the county business. Thank you. We've got six minutes.
Are, are we scheduled for an hour on this and then you go on to something else? Okay. Well, again, I want to thank you for doing the job that you and your folks have done, because you've come a long ways.
And we're doing it.
But you just haven't come far enough for me.
Well, we work at the.
Or, or citizens that are calling me.
Indeed.
Okay, so, uh, I think we need to think beyond today. That's kind of where I'm going with all this. Now, whether we talk about autonomous vehicles, the need for parking, or we think of ghetto living, I think planning is going to change a lot in Washington, uh, in the nation. When we get done with this virus, we see how ghetto living is spread around in China. And because of population, they have to stack all their little apartments on top of each other. And, you know, really, if you think about growth management, growth management encourages growth in the urban core and discourages growth in pro-America, and it controls sprawl and such. So that's all well and good. But I think we're going to think about, we've got social spacing going on right now because of this virus. I think you're going to see a review of how we do planning and where people are going to be living. I think the ghetto style of living is going to be on the outs for a while, and we're going to have some changes. So I'm thinking of all of those things. I'm thinking of an interest rate that's going to be a fantastic rate for those folks that want to do it every month, that want to build a house. So I want to get this system in place as fast as we possibly can to whatever degree I'm able to win a vote with, whether it's amnesty, whether it's, uh, uh, an enhanced permitting process that benefits the citizen, whether it's one percent, that's it, pay for it, you know, farther down the road. But I want to do it quickly. I don't want to dilly-dally around here and have something scheduled for a week from now and then something else scheduled for a week from now. The bureaucracy drives me absolutely nuts. And I'm here just being pretty outspoken about it, but I hear about it every day from citizens. So if nothing else, I mean, I'd like to call for a vote, you know, in the next three minutes on the amnesty.
So I'm still including amnesty from what?
Amnesty from any need for any permits while this illness is going on.
Let me, uh, do you have anything to weigh in?
Okay. But I, I don't know if I'm going to get a second and move forward on it, okay?
I'm voting on something.
I, I know we're not.
I want to hear, is this something now, Josh, you've been listening to us verbalize stuff this way, and you too, Camaro. Is there something you can come back to the board with that will answer a ton of questions for us regarding amnesty, what it is, what it isn't, or the legality of it, and other, the one percent and all that?
Well, um, uh, I think the, I still don't understand what amnesty means. Um, and, and all the good questions that you have, whether it's legality.
Okay, let me explain it to you. I want, I want to explain it to you. And what, what I actually mean is we're going to do something that's unparalleled. We're in a, we're in a situation here. So I want to tell citizens, go ahead and do your thing. Get your bank loan. This person that I'm talking about, the thirty-month delay, had to go through the bank three different times as he was trying to get his financing lined up during all this delay. I'm saying let these people go ahead and do their thing, and we're not going to haul them off to jail. They'll deal with all the inspections. Have them take pictures. I don't know.
They're not paying any, they're amnesty enough.
Amnesty would be nothing.
They're not paying.
If they settle up.
So that's what I tried, I thank you for the explanation. So what are you asking? Uh, I think what you're suggesting is the amnesty, using your words, is to ask the citizens to go ahead and build without a permit.
That's right.
Okay.
That's what amnesty would be. The one percent would be, we charge one percent upfront for the estimate of what the cost of this permitting process is going to be in total. So if it's a fifteen thousand dollar permit, then we pay one percent of that.
Is that part of the amnesty?
No, that, no, that's separate, separate from amnesty.
No.
So, uh, that's, if we want to get something, information back, that's what I want. I want that back. I'm realizing this isn't going to happen today. We're probably going to be discussing it next week. But what's wrong with early next week coming back with some, some information to help us make a decision?
So with that explanation of what amnesty is, uh, could you have, have enough information to come back with? What would be the pros and what would be the cons? And for Elizabeth or whomever, what are the legal ramifications of, of considering something like that? Can we get that in a timely fashion?
We can explore what it would be like to not have building permits and how legal that would be.
For the period of time that we're under this state of emergency.
Four days, two weeks, or a month, if we can get that information? Okay.
Definitely engage with legal on how legal it would be to not have building permits.
Thank you. That way we'll come back to us and we'll give thumbs up, thumbs down, sideways, whatever. Okay, so we can get further information, but I have time to session, not, not a couple of weeks down the road. Our schedule is kind of.
It's a question for legal.
Okay. Anything, anything else on this?
I'm not interested in the amnesty proposal. I am interested in the other, in the second proposal, but not on a sort of emergency. I would need more information to talk about the, as I said before, about what would be the financial impact of only taking one percent of the fees and how would we, how would we, how would we bridge that? I'm, I'm interested in more information on that. I'm not, I'm not interested in more information on no building permits in the county. To risk, how safety, environmental.
Okay, okay.
So, um, what I'm hearing is, um, judging how each commissioner stands on this, is you would like to bring, I believe from the two of you, additional information on what will happen if we just ask the citizens to build without a permit.
I'm actually in my head, but I want to hear.
No, I just want to understand what, what questions we need to answer from the board. Uh, I know the Commissioner is not interested in that, but I feel the, the two of you would like to hear additional information related to the amnesty. And I appreciate the, the, the clarification, the amnesty is to, uh, release the citizens to build without a permit.
Yeah, which, yeah, scares me.
No, no, I, I just, I'm not judging. I'm just trying to understand what you're requesting, uh, from staff. So we'll hopefully give at least a little bit of a piece of information, um, to you, hopefully by next Tuesday morning, if, if all possible. Also, uh, I believe Commissioner Minister would like to see a ballpark and numbers in terms of what will be the revenue for a year as to, uh, related to the, all the permit fees that we get and what that will represent, a one percent of that revenue for, for, at least that's what.
Well, a year is just based on a hypothetical, whatever the average, before this, the money would start coming in based on permit issuances.
No, and, and whether it's a year, six months, I think they're probably the same.
A million dollars.
The same exercise. We can probably take a year, um, that will be easier to come up with.
We have this sales tax bubble, but now this is going to cause an explosion in the budget. That was really concerning me too.
But I agree, this is only a one-time fix in that regard.
I'll tell you, I believe, Camaro.
And I believe you mentioned that, uh, you would like to do something. And that's a part of your statement, um, uh, in terms of this emergency. I don't know what that something will be, um, but, um, hopefully we can, we can bring some options to you, uh, next Tuesday morning.
Thank you.
And we're, and we're doing it.
Thank you for that.
Might, might be the answer.
And just to cut this off, I mean, I want to do something too, but I, I would like the focus, I would like this board's focus to be on real businesses that are operating in our community, what we can do to help them not go out of business. I think that should be the number one focus of our emergency COVID-nineteen-related with, you know, economic resiliency of our existing businesses, because those are real people with real jobs. And, you know, that's, I think, the focus of this emergency response in terms of new policy and, 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 and resources. You know, however much this would cost, let's say it would cost a million dollars to do this. I think with that million dollars should be focused on bridge loans to businesses so that they do not go out of business. And those people have jobs when this crisis is over. So that's going to be, even a good idea might be, in my opinion, outweighed by more pressing priorities for our community in terms of economic resiliency.
And add to that, even, uh, contractors and builders are, are a business too.
True, right.
Besides just the shell, uh, business, and that is so all-encompassing.
That's, that's the pipeline.
Yeah.
Almost being built, businesses are still in business because we're working through the plans review. We're doing it. We're in the middle of economic security right now.
Realtors.
But just to say, I mean, the governor did not, the governor did not shut down builders, and you're working to make sure they can continue to do their business. The government shut down a whole sector of our economy. Completely shut it down. They are not allowed to bring in income on, under any parameters.
And we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen to the builders.
And, and I don't think it will, based on what you've described.
You're amazing. We're, uh, five minutes old. We have guests here now. Actually, thank you. Uh, if I hit that one, I think I probably will survive like the voting ballot boxes.
It's, uh, not in a driveway area. You'll be able to hit it.
That one might click, no. Thank you, Josh.
You're good.
And thank you for using, uh, Jeff Turner's business.
Oh, is that right?
Yep. Be delightful. Thank you.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Let me do it. You got it?
Ah, good job.
Good morning.
You ruled, ruled the world, ruled the world. All right. So this is regarding, uh, United Way of COVID-nineteen Response. Can we have any rule? And we have Chris Wells.
Yes.
Please, the floor is yours.
So it is the United Way of Thurston County and Community, um, Foundation.
Fine, we'll go around, huh?
Yeah, I can all the minutes I want.
Five minutes.
Community Foundation of South Puget Sound partnering together to establish the Thurston County COVID-nineteen Response Fund. And it's specifically intended to address, um, two.
And we're live streaming, by the way.
Um, yeah. Uh, two different areas of primary concern. One being providing rapid financial assistance to the individuals who are being most profoundly impacted by the economic consequences of the virus and to the local nonprofits who are going to be juggling a couple of different things. One will be a drastic decline in the resources that they will be able to, um, to raise for the remainder of their fiscal year to fully fund their operations. And for those nonprofits who are doing direct service, and we'll see a surge in increased need and need, quick capacity to be able to expand their work to accommodate that. So United Way of Thurston County has already got a system in place for this. That's the United Way Emergency Assistance Fund. Just the partnership with the Community Foundation allows us to scale this to the greatest degree possible because this is going to be dealing with a much larger population than we would with our typical emergency assistance fund. Um, we have, this will be the third time in the last fourteen months that we've activated this system. The first time was during the partial government shutdown last year so that we can get rapid assistance to impacted federal employees. The first time was during the partial government shutdown last year so that we can get rapid assistance to impacted federal employees and contractors. And then most recently, um, just in late January for the Nisqually flood victims. So, uh, we have a system in place to very quickly administer funds, to get them to individuals, and now for our nonprofit partners in the community. Um, and now we're just mobilizing as much as we can in terms of resources. And Mindy and I are prepared to start emergency distribution, um, Monday.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mindy.
Um, Mindy Ruley, President and CEO of the Community Foundation of South Puget Sound. I mean, I think Chris, um, summarized what we're doing. The Community Foundation has pledged fifty thousand dollars already to this effort. And Chris and I have been, uh, fundraising a lot already, targeting local donors, local businesses, and also some more state and regional foundations and funders. Um, we're here to ask the county to contribute to this fund as well. Um, I think this is a partnership that we've never seen before between our two organizations, and we're committed to being flexibly deploying resources to preserve the safety net, social safety net, and people who's impacted during this time.
Okay. Question, sorry, the question went.
Um, you mentioned that, Chris, that you did this, uh, one time before for a government shutdown paid out, I don't know, I don't know, did you do grants or?
No, um, well, so what happened with that was, that was the first time we had ever launched an emergency assistance fund for United Way of Thurston County. So we did local donations, we raised money, and then the next day the government shutdown ended. So we had a couple of families who reached out for assistance and they were helped, but then there was a retroactive appropriation. So what happens with the emergency assistance fund is, when the fund is activated, uh, you, you deploy your resources when whatever the acute crisis is has passed. Whatever remains of the fund stays there until the next time you have to activate it. So the next time we had to activate it was the most recent Nisqually flood. Um, we had about forty-two thousand dollars, the emergency assistance fund at that time. We raised another twelve thousand dollars over the course of a couple of days, and then worked with emergency management officials to, uh, determine what the most acute need was. And as it happened at that time, it was, uh, long-term emergency shelter once the Red Cross shelter closed down for the families whose homes had had the most severe impacts of the flooding and they could not immediately return to their homes. So, uh, we negotiated a rate with a local hotel that's closest to the site of the flood. We housed all of those households that needed a place to stay while they were continuing to do the work on their homes. And in fact, we are still housing nine families at this time, um, related to the flood. And then Mindy and I met last week, um, to work on establishing what the parameters would be for assistance for COVID nineteen and the, um, impacts that we're anticipating.
Uh, and when you talk about those folks that are in dire situations, I guess, uh, a concern that I would have is that you don't have a line. Something that really aggravates me is when we give out money and, uh, we've got a line of folks there and they're smoking cigarettes, uh, two and a ten bucks a box or a pack or whatever, and trying to get government money or handout money to continue their bad habits. So I do have a concern about that type of thing. Uh, my follow-up, though, to my seatmates, would this fall under that category that we just got that award from Commerce? And could we take money and dedicate some of that money to what Chris is talking about?
That's only a million dollars.
Well, I don't know how much Chris is talking about.
Right, but, and that's for, uh, that's dedicated for, uh, emergency shelter.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm not sure if, if that's what you're doing as well, or is it not doing that yet?
Yes, I mean, so the way.
And how that's earmarked.
Yes, if you have, if you have funds that are earmarked specifically to prevent people from becoming homeless, then that's exactly how we have the ability to allocate that. We would know how much and what it's intended for. So emergency assistance funds, you know, for this, I think we've all said this and we're gonna hear a lot of it, we're in completely uncharted territory. Lifestyle choices aside, you know, we are distributing this as cash assistance. The way it works is that, um, you know, we've had an MOU in place with the Community Action Council of Lewis Mason and Thurston Counties for the last two years, specifically for activating emergency assistance. Because neither Mindy nor I are in the business of direct service. We are fundraisers and funders, um, as, as part of our essential functions in the community, right? So what we need is to have an organization whose sole business it is to do intake, assessment, verification of need and eligibility, household income, and rapid distribution of funds and robust case management. Community Action Council does that in the course of their daily business. So our MOU, that United Way of Thurston County, has had with CAC and is in place now for this situation as well, is that we will be mobilizing the resources and identifying where gaps and priorities are that require our immediate attention. Then we say to the Community Action Council, we are going to appropriate X amount of dollars for you to administer to meet those emergency needs related to this. So they do the intake and assessment, and then once they understand what that client's need is, they can also look at their other buckets of money that they have. So, um, I, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds on this, but before they would distribute COVID nineteen funds, they would look and see if they have other emergency resources available based on household income or other parameters. They would access those, and in that way they might be able to meet multiple needs, like an energy assistance fund, coupled with our COVID fund, could mean that your rent gets paid and that gets distributed directly to a landlord. Emergency energy assistance gets distributed directly to the energy provider, et cetera, et cetera. You're not writing checks to individuals and then hoping that based on goodwill, they're gonna go out and spend it on what you intended it to, to before. Um, where we are, are trying to be able to pivot very quickly is, we don't know what we don't know. So what we wanna make sure of is that we're able to respond as quickly and effectively and efficiently as possible. And we're also able to report back on what needs are being identified, what needs are being met. They gather a lot of data for us, they'll be able to tell us how many households, what type of assistance they requested, how many unique individuals were in those households, how many children under eighteen, what sectors they're coming from in terms of recent unemployment. Uh, they gather all of that and report it back to us so that we are constantly keeping an eye on things that we see emerging and we're able to respond.
Questions? Yep.
That pretty much answered my question. I wanted to just hear the mechanics of how.
Yes, there is a system, yeah.
I've, I've got a slew of questions, and if, I remember you just spit them out, and you can just answer them, fill the blanks, I know you will. Uh, specifically what we're doing, uh, what you can do to help businesses if they keep, uh, keep going, or the econ, the economy, or some of these employees, the, the people you wanna help.
Right.
And related to their business. Uh, senior services and food, uh, food banks? Uh, and, uh, I don't know if that one million dollars, uh, from Department of Commerce, I haven't read the report letter, so I'd probably hook you up with either Tom or, uh, Keely, I'm not sure if it would fit or not, I just don't know. Now, that would steer you wrong. Uh, and other commitments from other jurisdictions, uh, I understand Olympia, the city last night committed was fifty thousand dollars?
Yes. An initial appropriation of fifty thousand with the understanding that we are gonna need to go back and request more in future time, which they said they're prepared to provide.
You'll be, uh, asking other cities as well, jurisdictions?
Yes, yes.
To, to get this fund up and running?
So, um.
Businesses, seniors, food banks?
Businesses, seniors, food banks are, um, let me, I'm gonna take those in sort of reverse order. Um, seniors and food banks are gonna be at the top of our, our list of priorities. We've already both been hearing from local nonprofits. The impacts of the local nonprofits across the board are gonna be devastating. Mindy's organization is gonna feel it, my organization is going to feel it. The, um, assistance fund is not designed to make all nonprofits whole. It is designed for us to be able to very quickly respond to surge in need for those nonprofits who are going to be on the front lines of providing direct service to expanded populations who otherwise would not have required that assistance. Specific to food banks, we've heard from the Thurston County Food Bank, we're prepared to respond to that. I had a conversation last night with the new executive director of, um, Senior Services for South Sound in response to a request that we received from the city regarding, um, seniors who are now sheltering in place and can't go out and go grocery shopping. So immediately it becomes not just senior services and their typical meals on wheels clients and their congregant meal clients, but now an expanded pool of people who they were not previously serving, who cannot leave their homes. So it requires us to be able to quickly respond to that and to be able to accommodate that expanded need and make sure that they're well-resourced to provide that. Um, uh, the same thing goes for the food banks and then generally with the CAC. That's where we'll see the other requests that are related to things like rent payments or energy assistance or transportation and things like that, so.
So you have all these nonprofits, I'll get to Gary, but we have all these nonprofits competing for the same dollars. And folks wanna do the best they can, do I give to the food bank, do I give to here, do I give there, give here? And we have two nonprofits sitting here, and so Mindy, I asked you, the Community Foundation, what, what, uh, what is it your primary mission? How, how do you guys come together to do this?
Well, currently our primary mission is to support the community during this type of crisis. Our overall, our broader mission is that we raise permanent funds for the community, which we distribute out in grants and scholarships. Uh, we manage an endowment and grants and scholarships with that money, some is restricted, some is unrestricted. And, uh, we're both in the business of, you know, supporting these nonprofits that are doing hard work in our communities. So that's, that's where the, where the overlap is. We also have very close relationships with many of the nonprofits that are, um, that we're talking about here and that are serving these vulnerable populations. We just launched a, uh, impact survey yesterday to all nonprofits in Thurston, Mason, and Lewis County. We also serve Mason and Lewis County in our organization. And so it's a ten-question survey, and we're just trying to understand how nonprofits are adjusting and adapting to serve clients during this time. One example is Community Action Council is doing more of their case visits over video chat because of the social distancing requirements, that sort of thing, but they're still committed to seeing clients during this time.
Okay. Uh, do you work with the Salvation Army and the Veterans Hub and those organizations as well?
Well, yes, I mean, so the way United Way works is, um, we have, uh, uh, many local nonprofits go through a process to become a uni, what's called a United Way Community Impact Partner, right? So the Salvation Army is one of our community impact partners. And then once a nonprofit is a United Way Community Impact Partner, that makes them eligible to apply for United Way funds in the course of doing their regular, uh, administration of their, their services and their programs, right? So Salvation Army is a United Way Impact Partner, they are currently being funded by United Way. And, uh, relationship to the COVID nineteen fund, it's not, it is not exclusively, you're not required to be a United Way Community Impact Partner to, um, to be eligible to receive funds from that. The point of the impact survey is to start to get a very quick feel for what the immediate urgent impacts are to nonprofits who are out there trying to continue to deliver services. Because, you know, in crises like these, communities turn to their nonprofits to be able to, to, uh, provide resources to people, but those resources don't magically appear. They require organizations to be able to mobilize the resources to meet those needs. And so, you know, we go to our own major stakeholders, um, for our organizations, we go to foundations, we go to municipal, county, and state governments, and we mobilize those resources. It's our business to be able to be very quickly responsive in community emergencies like this, so.
Did you mention Veterans Hub under, I, I, do you work with Veterans Hub? I mean, that's kind of a, a thing of mine, I'm a veteran.
I mean, we've worked with any nonprofit, uh, so United Way's focuses are health, education, and financial stability, right? Any nonprofit that is delivering services in those three focus areas of health, education, and financial stability can be a United Way partner. So if Veterans Hub wanted to be a United Way partner, they can certainly go through that process. They're eligible. But that doesn't really have anything to do with this.
They're not, they're not right now.
I don't think they are.
Okay.
We have, I think, twenty-something, twenty-four, twenty-six nonprofits who are partners right now.
Okay, any questions? I have a question, I, I, you won't go ahead? I have another question, but.
What is the ask of the company?
Yeah.
What is the dollar amount? I mean, obviously, if you're for.
Initially, yes.
Before you, before you answer that question, though, before we get to the bottom line, just like the shark tank, that you're coming here, I'm requesting. Um, I'm gonna ask this question about process.
Yeah.
You have, uh, you have a fund, and you have two nonprofits with this overarching fund, and you have five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty applicants. How's that decision-making process, what's that look like? And how do you, what kind of vetting process do you go through to, to determine who, who can get what kind of money?
Do you want to finish with whatever you want? I'll try, I'll start, you go.
So we.
That's a fair question, I mean, Romero, maybe let me jump in on you.
Uh, we, so both of our organizations are grant makers, so we have great familiarity with, familiarity with the nonprofits in the community operating. Uh, but we've committed to a collaborative decision-making process where Chris and I and two members of each of our board of directors will get together to make the actual funding decisions. And we wanna make sure that we're, that is complemented by what local health is doing to respond, what other kinds of state and federal stimulus packages are coming down. So we're taking kind of the full, full picture of what other relief is out there as we make these decisions. But we've come in as our two organizations to make those decisions. We have a lot of that budget information on file for the nonprofits already, so we don't expect to do a formal application process. This seems to be more flexible and responsive than that. And we have the, we have much of that background information on nonprofits and can get it fairly quickly, but it wouldn't be a formal application process.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a fair question, that's what, that number's below the line.
So, um, that really depends on what pool of dollars are available to the county that you can allocate for health and human service needs. Um, for me, there's a really good chance we're gonna be back here again at some point in the future asking for supplemental funds. We are not going to overfund the need, that's not gonna happen. Uh, I would say right now, um, we are at a hundred and seventy thousand as of first thing this morning that we have, and we have another dozen asks that are sort of hanging out there. We know that, um, to be able to credibly respond, um, very quickly, we wanted to have between three and five hundred thousand dollars available in that fund immediately, once we activate it on Monday. So I would ask that you consider making an appropriation of at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and more if you have more available to you, and we will likely be coming back sometime within the next couple of months.
I, I don't know if anybody else has this concern, uh, but I'm gonna ask. If we were to do this, uh, that sends the message, oh, our doors are open. And we will have, uh, either recipients of, of eventual, of your funding, but others that may not receive it coming to the county, please give us, because the need is genuine, it's there. Uh, did Olympia, or has anybody else expressed that, that concern?
No, um, and I know that that's something that you're going to have to be prepared to respond to. I know the county is not gonna have the capacity to find every request they receive. I think in terms of having an efficient, transparent, coordinated response that addresses the most, uh, urgent needs immediately, there are no other organizations who have the capacity to do this. I mean, that's, this is what we do in the course of our business. Um, and I think the most efficient thing that the county and other governments wanna do to be able to respond this is to rely on the expertise of organizations like United Way and Community Foundation to, to do that as effectively as we're able to. We are not gonna be able to meet a hundred percent of the needs. Every nonprofit is going to be experiencing real pain, just like every business, um, is gonna be experiencing real pain. But in order to reach the most people, the greatest needs, and, um, and the organizations who are delivering those services to them, this is, this is an excellent vehicle for doing that.
Do you receive any, uh, state or federal funding as a result of earmarking all this, all that you're doing, uh, related to COVID nineteen? Is there any, any backfill at all?
No, not for, not for us, absolutely not. And we're gonna have, I mean, we're already projecting, you know, our fiscal year ends June thirtieth. I mean, we will be very heavily impacted and we are pivoting one hundred percent to COVID nineteen response. Uh, we, I, I just saw an email from United Way Worldwide a few minutes ago. We are actually going to be, um, approaching lawmakers to talk about a relief package that is specifically directed to the nonprofit sector because, you know, we're expected to be able to respond in this, and we are gonna be impacted by it as well. So we'll do that kind of advocacy, but no, we do not get state and federal dollars. We are a pass-through and an administrator of some state, or well, not state dollars, federal dollars for Department of Homeland Security, but that's not revenue for, for us, that's, uh, funding for the federal government that we help to administer, so.
And we also don't get state or federal funding. We have been the intermediary for, um, long stick tobacco lawsuit money, maybe many years ago.
Okay. My case. Yeah.
We were successful, uh, fairly quickly, uh, on the application to Commerce because we've got a plan kind of laid out to work with the other municipalities. And I think that's why we got that money pretty fast.
Yeah, so, yeah, quickly.
So, would this, would a designated amount? So, would this, would a designated amount going to this request, would that help verify that we are doing what the plan says? I mean, so is it part of the team concept, if you will? And maybe such a thing, we can even go back and ask tomorrow if we show that we are working in that team concept.
In my head, it does.
But Tom or somebody that's read the material needs to tell us that, so.
Go ahead, Romero.
So, um, you know, for me, it's just managing expectations. I don't think the board will be in the position to make a decision today on that request of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, because we need to bring information to the board as to where the money will come from. So I know this sense of urgency. I know you'd like to stand this fund and be available on Monday. Uh, I don't think we can, the board is in the position to do that, to be honest with you at this point.
Yeah, but it was that same day.
And and what I'm planning to do is bring as soon as possible some of the options the board has in order to address your request. I will touch base with Tom to see if they grant for Commerce. Could be an avenue as to how you consider diverting some of those funds. I really don't know. There's a brand-new grant. I don't know what the strings attached to that is. But certainly Tom Webster will be in the position to help us go through that. If that is not a viable option, then what other options do we have? And 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 at this point, I don't know what other other options we have, but certainly we're going to bring that to you as soon as Tuesday morning.
The bureaucracy.
No, it's just the process.
I know.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, we are activating Monday no matter what. But what we have is going to be very quickly expended based on what we're seeing now and what we predict we'll be seeing in the in the next. Well, I mean, by next week, people are missing paychecks. So there's an enormous amount of anxiety right now, but the real economic impacts are, you know, within the next seven to ten days.
So, Brian, we're still streaming? Live streaming?
Yes.
So if somebody's listening at home or at the office, wherever they're sheltering, if they want to donate, how and where do they do this? And repeat it twice aloud, at least all these microphones here.
Yeah, so it's going to be lengthy. It's not that long, but it's unitedway-thurston.org/covid-nineteen. So that if you go to unitedway-thurston.org, it's going to be the first image you see. It'll take you straight to the information page. And you can give through that online portal to support the COVID nineteen fund and, um, yeah.
Let's United Way.
Dash Thurston dot O R G.
Dash Thurston dot O R G.
And the first image you will see will take you straight to that COVID fund page.
Okay. Mindy, do you have a different site or is it all the same then?
We've collaborated just to have one site.
Yay, that's easy for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, it's all the same and all flows through as one channel.
Good. And when you donate, tell them who sent you, okay? Anything else?
Just, I'm, I'm just like to have these folks when they know. I'm implying to try and figure out a way to help and.
I am, I am as well.
Okay, so just so they know, they're kind of all on the same sheet of music. Uh, and I, I hope that, I mean, we have very limited resources. Most of these folks don't know. You don't know anything about county finance, lack of retail, fifteen eighty-five percent, whatever.
But you know about process.
Yeah, and, uh, so, uh, I would hope maybe some of this would would pan out with Tom, with that Commerce that that we got.
I'll follow.
I think it fits myself, but I don't know enough.
Now, we don't vote on the same day as a topic comes up, but you already have three thumbs ups at this point, it's just now.
In concept.
Where, yeah, where do we go from here?
Yeah.
So thank you very much, I mean, and thank you for staying separate.
Thank you for doing what you do for folks.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
And thank you for hearing us. I just, I just, the preserving the safety net at this time is of the utmost importance.
Utmost.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Nice to see you, Mindy.
Yeah.
And you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you both. Thank you.
Romero, is any wrap up before we pull the plug? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, Brian. The microphone is still going.
Romero, how how did folks get in? Do we have?